I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for November 18th, 2014. Invite you to stand if you would while Commissioner Waltrip introduces the person who will give our indication tonight.
Adam Schurz from the Broadway United Methodist Church will provide the indication tonight. Thank you, Adam.
Let's pray. God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for a warm place to gather and for these leaders who gather regularly to oversee the work of this city. We thank you for the chance to consider matters and we pray that your wisdom and guidance would direct all of that. We thank you for the young people who are here today, who represent a lot of hard work and success, and we pray that you would bless them. We pray that you would bless our city, that you would watch over it, and that you would bring great things for its people. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shaller, please call the roll.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. We have a number of awards and recognitions that we're going to bring to your attention tonight. None more exciting than a group of young men sitting over here who are going to start making their way and snake all the way around in front of us here so we can get your picture on the camera. As they're walking up, I'll introduce the 2014 Bowling Green High Purples soccer team, state champions. Come on up, gentlemen. Coach Widener is here to introduce a couple of other people like his other coaches, and go right ahead, sir.
With me today is Mr. Melvin Anaya, who has actually came back to coach this season, was the captain of the 2006 state championship team, Mr. Richard Zellner, who is a handyman extraordinaire, and Dr. Chad Fulk, and I'm Craig Widener.
Thank you for being here. We've got a little presentation that we'd like to make, and it's beginning to be a habit with Bowling Green High teams around here, but this is a...
We're good.
That's right. This is a proclamation on behalf of not only the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, but the city of Bowling Green. So whereas the Bowling Green High School Soccer Team maintained a 21-1-1 winning season for 2014, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Soccer Team won their second overall Kentucky Soccer State Championship in the KHSAA Soccer Tournament, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Soccer Team won the championship game by a score of 6 to 4, and whereas the Bowling Green High Soccer Team and their coaching staff led by head coach Craig Widener has dominated high school soccer in 2014, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Purple fans are the...
Greatest in the world.
Now therefore, we, the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners of the city of Bowling Green, do hereby proclaim 2014 as the season of Bowling Green Purple Soccer in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and acknowledge this outstanding accomplishment in the area of high school athletics, and encourage everyone to congratulate all the members of the team and their coaching staff. Congratulations.
Mayor, you may want to know, I gave them a little pep talk a little earlier out in the hallway, not to all of them, but to several who were here first, and they understood what I was saying.
Another thing to note is that the only team ever outside of Lexington or Louisville to win a state championship in Kentucky is Bowling Green, and they've done it twice. Way to go, Bowling Green High.
Good job there. Craig, will you...I'll tell you, why don't you come up here? I'm sure some of the parents would like for you to be in this picture too, and around the edge. Maybe the two coaches can come up as well, and we'll just present this to you. And while we're here, Craig's not only involved in teaching and in coaching at soccer, he's also on our Greenways Commission for Bowling Green Warren County. Appreciate his service there as well. So we've let all the parents have their shot-ins here.
And if you want to come up a little closer, feel free.
Everybody got what they wanted. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Coach?
Yes, sir. Thanks.
Congratulations. Great job. Great job. Thanks, guys. Go Purples.
Congratulations. Now, onto Olympics.
Now help us find a kicker for the football team, will you?
Yep, my son's in the...
How you doing? You going? Congratulations.
Hey, hey. What's your name? It was wonderful. Oh, okay. Enjoy being here. Nice meeting you.
You the goalie dude? Mm-hmm. You have the look of a goalie about you. Ah, he has a look too. Long hair.
What was the gentleman's name, the last one you spoke with? Savanovic?
Savanovic.
I thought he looked like Bobby Fielding.
Bobby Fielding.
Bobby Holdafield.
The last one right there. I'm sorry, we're reminiscing here. Excuse us. A couple of other announcements is we'd like to congratulate Kay Hayes, who's retiring after a total of 35 years with city government, retiring from the Neighborhood and Community Services Division. And also, I'd like to congratulate our Chamber of Commerce President, Ron Bunch, was recognized by the Kentucky Association of Economic Development as the 2014 Allied Professional of the Year. Of course, he doesn't do it by himself. He has his whole crew there, represented here tonight by Meredith Robinson and others, and former Chamber Chair Brad Howard is here with us as well. So we want to congratulate Ron Bunch and the entire chamber. One other thing, I'm taking up your space here, I guess. The 2014 City of Bowling Green calendar is available and is free. It's actually the 2015 calendar. The 2014 Annual Report is part of the calendar on each side, so please feel free to take one. There are various businesses around the city and here at City Hall as well. Do you have any awards or recognitions?
I do not.
Okay, I think we do have Operation Pride here. Ms. Alexia, please step forward.
Sorry, I have to take it down. Okay. I'm Angie, my name is Angie Alexia. I'm the executive director of Operation Pride. We've been here for about 21 years and formed by the city and the county governments to take on community improvements.
Angie? Angie, can you go to the microphone, please?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm not doing that.
Thank you.
Okay. Hear better?
It's better.
Okay. Operation Pride's been here 21 years, and we have taken on a number of projects for the city and for the county that improve our community, both aesthetically as well as welcoming people to Bowling Green and welcoming industry. And we have one of the awards that we give every month is an Operation Pride Residential Award and a Commercial Award. And this evening, I would like to present the Residential Award first, and if I could ask Jamie and Jenna Akins to come up?
Power.
Oh, I thought it was on.
Yeah.
Can do it.
Yeah, turn it back on.
Just when you thought you had it under control, right?
Okay. I'm going to do it from the left. There it is. We'll do it this way. Excuse me. Okay. Let's redo it this way. Okay. Okay. This is their home before, maybe it says Chambers Drive, and they made a number of new additions to it. It's... I'm doing the next one. And this is the after. Would you like to tell them what you've done? I know we could tell the doors, the front doors.
Got rid of a lot of trees. New windows, doors, lights outside. And the gutters?
The gutters, they're getting us given place. Everything pretty much on the exterior got replaced. So there's a lot of overgrown bushes. We got new soil, brought in topsoil, new grass, pretty much from top to bottom. We pretty much went from what we had and what we purchased to pretty much a new exterior.
That's wonderful. Congratulations.
Operation Pride, we'd like to present you with the November Residential Pride Award, and I'm going to give that to you, and we just really appreciate the work you've done here. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Operation Pride is our National Pride Award, and I would like, if I could have Roe Lanston, everybody knows Roe. Roe's the executive director of Lost River Cave, and I'm going to let her explain it to you, but as you know, it has just really developed over the years, and it's always been a beautiful place, but it seems to just have new things and wonderful things added to it, and I hear about it all the time, but it also looks beautiful out front. So could you just explain a little bit about what you've done?
I will.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. I appreciate the award for November. We have put a lot of effort into our appearance at Lost River Cave. We welcome 60,000 to 65,000 visitors, mainly for the cave boat tour, and mostly from outside of this area, so that we do believe that having a good-looking front door is important for our community. We actually train our staff as ambassadors, to think of themselves as ambassadors for our community, and it's surprising the number of people who've come back to us after their initial visit, either to get married, New Yorkers, people from Minnesota, Wisconsin, and they'll come back and utilize Lost River Cave as a place for their wedding, or they'll come back and live here. I've had on a number of occasions, people checking out this area for potentially relocating, and so I think having an appealing front door is helpful, but I also want to thank the city for its partnership and what the impact the city of Bowling Green has had on Lost River Cave over the years. And it started with the acquisition of some property under the Greenways Commission. Nowadays, we can see that has been restored to a prairie along Dishman Lane, and there's a Greenways Trail along the upper bluff along Lost River Cave, and then it continued with the development of a wetland behind the visitor's center, and that wetland is helping us to keep the water before it enters into the cave system cleaner than it would have been as it came off of Nashville Road. It's an important partnership, and our most recent partnership with the city, I was very fortunate that this rack card just came in this morning, and I thought, I've got to take this downtown with me, and thanks to Josh Hankins and Matt Powell in the Stormwater Department at the city of Bowling Green, we now have 5,000 rack cards to distribute through our educational programs with area schoolchildren, and these will also be available on the park, and the city of Bowling Green has credit here as the printers and producers of this piece. And so this is all about clean water. It's up to all of us, and many thanks to the city for their help with the projects that have made Lost River Cave what it is today, and we are always looking for ways to continue developing, especially our outreach in educational areas, and I thank the city for its help in so many ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other awards or recognitions? Mr. Febo, do you have any comments tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I do. There'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reasons. Kate?
Pursuant to KRS 61810B, for deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city. And KRS 61810G, discussions between the city and a representative of a business entity in discussions concerning a specific proposal, if open discussions would jeopardize the siting, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Waltrip. Second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Approval of amendments for the regular meeting on October 21st, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill. Second by Dunning. Any comments or corrections? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Approval of amendments for the regular meeting on October 21st, 2014. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill. Second by Dunning. Any comments or corrections? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Approval of amendments for the regular meeting on October 21st, 2014. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill. Second by Williams. Mr. Febo, any other comments tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I do. There'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reasons. Kate?
Pursuant to KRS 61810B, for deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city. And KRS 61810G, discussions between the city and a representative of a business entity in discussions concerning a specific proposal, if open discussions would jeopardize the siting, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business.
No movement.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Waltrip. Second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Approval of amendments for the regular meeting on October 21st, 2014. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill. Second by Dunning. Any comments or corrections? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Approval of amendments for the regular meeting on October 21st, 2014. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill. Second by Dunning. Any comments or corrections? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. We offer a time for public comments. If anyone has an item to bring to our attention that's not on tonight's agenda, this would be the time for that. Seeing no one, we'll move right on, and out of deference to former Commissioner Mark Alcott, we'll be going to item 21 on our agenda first. Set us three under the bus mark. That's all right.
Are you giving him a favor?
I am doing a favor for Mark Alcott. I sure am. Just for the record, municipal order 2014-227.
Municipal order approving agreement to construct and use property for recreational purposes among the city of Bowling Green, Bowling Green District United Methodist Church and the Foundry Christian Community Center Incorporated, related to the construction of a soccer field, recreational field on property located at 531 West 11th Avenue.
No movement.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Waltrip. Second by Hill. Mr. Febo?
Thank you, Mayor. For about a year now, the city has been in discussions with Bowling Green District United Methodist Church and Foundry Christian Community Center Board for the development of a new soccer complex field at the Foundry location. At our September retreat, staff was instructed to start, outline, an agreement that could be vetted before the commission and voted on. We have done that. We've met with United Methodist Church leadership, as well as their legal counsel, and we're here tonight to present a proposal. If you like, either Jim Harmon or Brent Beltrick can go through the details of the agreement for you. Bill is the sponsor. How would you like to proceed?
Pleasure, Commissioner. I've read it all. We've read...I mean, we all have copies of it.
Do you want Brent to outline?
I'd hate for Brent to walk up there and not be able to say something, so Brent, give us a thumbnail sketch.
I love the microphone, so I'd be happy to do a little of my extended version. First off, appreciate the foundries and I think it's the United Methodist District for their interest in this and for the citizens of Bowling Green. This is a unique opportunity for our department and for the citizens, and we're privileged and welcome the opportunity to make this happen. I guess in a nutshell, the property at 531 West 11th Street, which is, I think, the public will most recognize as formerly the Boys and Girls Club, is what we're discussing. And real quick, we're just going to convert the lot into a tournament-quality Bermuda soccer field with lights that will no doubt attract numerous and an abundance of players, and we know will serve the west end, if not the entire, community very well. So the city will be constructing the fields themselves, or be in charge of the construction ourselves, in charge of the utilities after that, and in our partnership, the United Methodist Church will be doing a $15,000 contribution towards it, and they'll be doing a lot of the personnel day-to-day responsibilities of the site and some oversight of that sort of thing, and it's going to be a unique partnership that we definitely feel like will benefit the city.
Can you identify who will be scheduling a use of the city park?
It'll be a city park, and that is paramount to the partnership. It'll be a city park. We'll have a signage and look just like any other park, be welcome, the entire public will be welcome there, and all scheduling will be done through Bowling Green Parks and Rec. The entire...whether it's practicing rentals, league play, whether it's baseball, football, or soccer, will be done through Parks and Rec. We'll actually be in charge of the maintenance as well, and once again, the church itself will be in charge of the day-to-day upkeep and oversight of the activities on location.
Mr. D?
That was my question I was going to ask. City manager beat me to it.
He's good with that. He knows he's good with that.
Anything else? I know it's going to pass 4-1. Don't let my no vote be offensive to you. It's a not-yet vote because we're in the midst of a Parks Master Plan study. I just think we'll wait till it's done, be March when it's finished, so. Any other comments?
Only to, again, this has been at least a year and a half project, extend our appreciation to Rick and to Adam and Mark, who got involved in doing the contract, and also city staff did a fantastic job once we zeroed in on this location and putting all this together, and I think it's going to be a tremendous asset for the city of Bowling Green as a whole and specifically for the west end of Bowling Green. We have a new Old Morgantown Road. We're doing improvements on College View Drive. There's two beautiful new schools in the area, with the last one being Dishman McGinnis. Dublin Estates is a subdivision that's going in, and I think we're seeing some good things. And out of all of this, I think that we're going to improve the quality of life for a number of people, and I know the Foundry is involved in other issues such as preschool, after-school care, partnerships with city schools, the Health Department, the Gattan Academy, so this is just another great partnership, I think, and it'll last for years and years to come. Thank you all.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Not yet. First...or excuse me, second reading of BG Ordinance 2014-28.
Ordinance relating to Classification Pay Schedule. Ordinance amending the Classification Pay Schedule G for general classified employees of the city of Bowling Green for fiscal year 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill. Second by Williams. Mr. Febo, any other comments?
I mentioned it last month. I can go over it again, but essentially, this is to adjust the pay plan to allow for the proper wage to be paid for the services we need in this position.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2014-29.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending chapter 23, Water and Sewer of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordances, related to limitations on wastewater discharges as proposed by Bowling Green Municipal Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill. Second by Dunning. This, again, is second reading. Is there any other discussion or comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2014-30.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending chapter 6, Building Regulations, subchapter 6-4, Fees of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordenses, to revise building plan review fees for the review of multiple identical buildings.
No movement.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip. Second by Dunning. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2014-31.
Ordinance relating to Budget Amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number one to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill. Second by Williams. Any other discussion we previously discussed? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2014-32.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending chapter 2, Administration, Subchapter 2-2, Board of Commissioners of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordenses, to make changes related to revisions in Kentucky law and add language for elections of Board of Commissioners.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dunning. And second by Hill. Just as a reminder, this is the ordinance that deletes the requirement for primary in non-moderating city elections only. Any other discussion?
Effective...this will be effective starting the calendar year of 2016.
Yes. Actually, it starts January 1st next year, but the next election's not until 2016.
Right. That's what I meant.
Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-216.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Sean A. Weeks to the position of Chief Accountant in the Finance Department. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. I was a little worried there.
Don't take that as any reflection.
Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron Ballou recently left city service to take another job. This created a vacancy in the important position of Chief Accountant. This position is primarily responsible for the CAFER and requires an accounting degree and some significant experience. I would ask Jeff Mizel to put his nomination before you.
As Kevin mentioned, we had the opening. We have four current staff accountants in our department. We view this as a promotional opportunity, so we opened up to those. We had three to apply and we interviewed three based on qualifications and relevant experience. We are recommending Sean Weeks tonight. Sean has a bachelor's degree in accounting. He also has a Certified Public Finance Officer certification, CPFO. Sean began work in 2006 in the Finance Department. Worked on a lot of different things over the years. He was significantly involved in setting up the new software system, as you know, New World Systems that we did in 2008. Has thorough knowledge of the city's accounting system and software. Sean's been involved in the budget for a number of years. He's also had a lead role in the fiscal year and closing each year. And based on his overall skill set that we need in this position, we felt that he'd make an immediate contribution in the role. So, tonight, I'm asking for your approval to promote Sean Weeks to Chief Accountant.
The most important thing that you left out of your list, though, he had the wisdom to marry Anita, who's sitting there with him. Stand up, Sean. Let everybody see who you are. Congratulations. Congratulations. But we've got one more thing to do on it. We actually have to vote. So, please call, I'm sorry, any other comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-217.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Nicholas P. Cook to the position of Grants Coordinator in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. In this year's budget, we re-instituted the position of Grants Coordinator that previously was titled Grants Manager. We went out to solicitation. This is a very unique skill set required to do this job. You need to have what is called a certification in CBG programming in the state. We're happy tonight to present for your consideration Mr. Nick Nicholas Cook. Nick, if I will, has nine years' experience with Brad. He has the required certification in CBG as well as some certification economic development and finance, which is also helpful. I believe he's here in the office, I mean, in the audience. What's important to note, this is a continued effort by us to provide citywide services. He'll be the grantsman for the whole city, for all departments, not just for CBG, which is an attempt by us to bring some efficiencies to city government. So, I give you Nick Cook.
Nick is back here in the back row. If you'd stand, please, so everybody can see him. I wasn't aware that you were involved in the running. I'm tickled to get to vote on this. I've seen your work on many occasions. So, any other comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Congratulations again. Municipal Order 2014-218.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Megan R. Carroll to the position of Office Associate in the Parks and Recreation Department. So moved. Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill, Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. When we promoted Tony Whitmer to take over for Park and Rec Maintenance as well as golf maintenance, we thought that in this year's budget, we would create a position of Office Associate to help Tony and free him from administrative work and allow him to manage people out in the field at both positions. Pamela Booze, who worked under Anna Maroney, transferred to that position, thus creating this opening in the former Pam Booze position. We had 198 applicants.
Wow.
Yes, it's almost 200. 39 were tested. From that, we interviewed seven. And we're here tonight to recommend Megan Carroll to the position of Office Associate in Park and Rec. She obviously has the skill set, as you can see from her resume. She's been in various positions and has tested well in requisited skills. I think Megan is here.
Megan is here. Congratulations.
So she's going to be in Little Brent's department, is that right, Mayor?
Little Brent, but working with Tony Whitmer. The former position had, believe it or not, no administrative support for all these years. And we thought, you need this, you need people to help you. So, we want Tony to be out in the field, working on stuff, and Megan can help. Anna, backfill for Pam Booze is now with Tony.
That's great. Congratulations. Any other comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And you guys, we just voted on you. Please feel free to slip on out. You don't have to sit here and wait for the rest of us here.
Except for the ones that is already here that's being promoted from within you.
Municipal Order 2014-219.
Municipal Order approving the reappointments of Roddy Grimes and Jim Ed Holland to the Contractors Licensing Board. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. That's a reappointment for people who've been there. Let's see, Roddy's in his, beginning his second term and Jim Ed, I think, his third term. These are joint appointments with the county. Any comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-220.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-11 for final design services for Small House Road Corridor Improvements from Arnold Consulting Engineering Services Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $68,555. So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Febo.
As the commission knows, one of our critical road projects this year will be the widening of Small House Road from Highland to Campbell Lane. That is a troublesome area of the community, especially at rush hour, and we're taking the responsibility to improve that corridor there. This is a fairly complex project. It's going to involve not only the building of a road, but stormwater, curbing, sidewalk, and probably most importantly, management of traffic during construction as well as coordination of signal lighting. Last thing we want to do is fix the road and mess up the signals. So, we need a good skill set here. So, we went out to solicitation for engineering services. We had four respondents. In our opinion, we feel that the most responsible and lowest price is for ACES or Arnold Consulting Engineering Services in the amount of $68,555. The other lower bid didn't respond to the traffic elements of the request. Jeff Lashley is here, if you have any questions. This is the lowest evaluated bid. Correct.
Any comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-221.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-19 for Small House Road and Ridge Crest Way Drainage Improvements from Scott &amp; Ritter Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $700,511.75. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning, Mr. Febo.
This city commission likes to build new roads, put in sidewalks, and take care of drainage improvements. One of our top priorities this past year is the drainage improvements needed nearer around Small House Road and Ridge Crest Way. We went out to a bid. We had four respondents, three of which were valid and one didn't meet all the requirements of bonding. We're here tonight to recommend the lowest responsible bid, which is Scott &amp; Ritter, in the amount of $700,511. Again, Jeff Lashley is here, if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-222.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-18 for the purchase of vehicles for the Public Works, Neighborhood and Community Services in Parks and Recreation Departments from various vendors in the total amount of $256,114.56. So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. We need to purchase eight vehicles in the city. During our difficult period, we didn't buy many vehicles. And now, since things are slowly improving financially and in our economy, we need to purchase vehicles in city departments. We're here tonight to ask you to purchase eight vehicles. We put together six bid packages. We had five bidders respond to that. We're here tonight to recommend four out of the five receive the low bid for their respective packages. Those are Jim Johnson, Greenwood, Campbell, and Andy Moore out of Indianapolis. It's significant to note that local option was applied where applicable and helped local bidders receive the bid. Again, Jeff is here, if you have any questions. Mr. Dunning?
Just a brief comment, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If you remember, about two or three months ago, there was a letter to the editor of Daily News saying that we were giving jobs to other companies out of the city of Bowling Green on our local bids from automobile dealerships. Well, as you can see, we have three out of the four bidders that are local dealerships. And first of all, we weren't taking jobs out of the city of Bowling Green for those vehicles because the only vehicle that is manufactured in the city of Bowling Green is the Corvette. And we don't have any Corvettes in any of our fleet, whether they're police cars or whatever. So, I am glad to see our local bidders involved as far as bidding on vehicles, whether it's cars, trucks, or whatever. It makes good business for all the ones here in the city of Bowling Green.
Mr. Mayor, I just like, and obviously, I'll be abstaining on this because one of my employers is involved in a small portion of this bid, but it makes me very happy to see that we've got better participation among our local dealerships, our local providers to want to bid in these processes. And I think the changes that we made earlier in our bidding process and the communication to that has certainly helped. It's not going to one local bidder. It's going to be, the business is being spread around very nicely, but I'm glad to see our local people are getting it. That's great.
Any other comments or questions?
One other. I think it says a whole lot about our process that we have. Even with the preference for local bidders, we still have bidders from out of state to bid on our vehicles. So, it has a lot to do with the way we go about during business.
Good point. Please call and roll.
Williams?
Abstain.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-223.
Municipal Order authorizing change order number six to the contract with AMEC Environment and Infrastructure Incorporated of Nashville, Tennessee for the final design services for Butler County Landfill Improvements, bid number 2012-20, in the amount of $4,300. So moved. Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill, Mr. Febo.
For the past year or so, we've been working with Division of Waste Management to, bless you, to improve and correct the long-term leachate management at our landfills, particularly in this case, Butler Landville. The Division of Waste has been intimately involved with the project, so intimate, in fact, they're going to provide $2.8 million of their own money and only require us to pay $90,000. This has required us to listen to their request and to ask you to go through the process of accepting six change orders. This is hopefully the sixth and final change order for $4,300 to abide by the request of Division of Waste. To give us some comfort, Matt Powell, who's been managing this process and those should receive much of the credit for us receiving the money, submitted a letter from the Department of Finance saying, "We got the money." So, that's nice. So, this change order hopefully should be taken into consideration with that money. Matt's here, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Waste Management, Matt? The landfill man. All right, please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate all the work on that. First reading of ordinance BG 2014-33.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.25 acre from LI Light Industrial to NB Neighborhood Business located at 1149 Adams Street, presently owned by Greg and LeAnn Powell. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning.
I believe Steve Hunter is here, if you have any questions about the rezoning.
We have the packet and we have the planning and zoning commission's report. Are there any other comments or questions?
I don't have any for Steve.
Please call and roll.
We like seeing you sit out there.
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2014-34.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 5.01 acres from MHP Mobile Home Park and HB Highway Business to HB Highway Business located in the 2800 block of Nashville Road, presently owned by Benmark Properties Incorporated with MA Williams Properties Incorporated as contract mandee. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams.
Again, Steve Hunter, planning and zoning director, if you have any questions.
I do have one question for Mr. Hunter, since he made the trip.
This was the trailer park that we had so much trouble with that ended up being condemned, is that correct?
One of them, yeah. Yeah, this is probably, there was actually two over there on each side of this. If you look at your map, there was actually this trailer park and then where the liquor store is, the trailer park on the east side would be another one that we had similar issues with.
Do you know what the plans are for that property?
Storage buildings.
Okay. What storage?
Storage buildings, storage facilities. There should be a concept plan in your packet that showed kind of an outline there.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Hunter? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-224.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of a letter of interest to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Office of Sustainable Communities for Bike Sharing Planning Assistance for the Greenways Commission. So moved. Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill, Mr. Febo.
In a non-regulatory action, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency put out a notice to local communities that is interested in making end-kind technical assistance available to the locals. We circulated this to the planning and zoning department. And Miranda Clemmons, in her role, working with the Greenways and Bike Sharing, has asked us to support a resolution. I believe Miranda would like to make a short presentation about this particular, is that correct? With your courtesy.
I actually have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm not sure if I'm going to use it after. This is kind of a new concept, so I thought it'd be helpful to just do this very short PowerPoint about it. But basically, the Building Blocks Program is a, supports the priorities of the Partnership for Sustainable Communities, which is a collaborative effort. Kate, Katie, how do you get this to?
It should be on the side, just advance.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's working.
You can move the mouse up to the board and then use that.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so the Building Blocks for Sustainable Communities provides technical assistance to up to 25 different communities on a variety of different topics. And basically, what it is, is a one-to-two-day workshop on a specific smart growth topic such as bike share planning. I guess I have to go over there. This Building Blocks Program supports the priorities of the Partnership for Sustainable Communities, which is a collaborative effort among HADDOT and EPA. And basically, it's to encourage more transportation options and less expensive transportation And basically, it's to encourage more transportation options and less expensive transportation options, access to affordable housing while protecting the environment. One of the tools offered, and the one we have chosen, is the Bike Share Planning Program, which will help us consider establishing a bike share program. If chosen, experts will come to Bowling Green to help us learn how different bike share programs work, financing options, community activity centers, employers that might be served by bike share, how the system might be owned, designed, operated, and funded, and how bike share might be a potential service to people who are economically disadvantaged. And then who should, just say we are chosen, hopefully we will be, we have those workshops. One of the things I'm actually asking you tonight is to attend those should we have one of them. It'd be for elected officials, local government staff, community leaders, and then potential bike share partners like Western and the health organizations and major employers, and also environmental justice advocates, and then just interested community members. Like I said before, it'd be a one-to-two day onsite assistance, which there'll be an evening public presentation, a morning work session with key stakeholders, and then an afternoon meeting with the government leaders. So if we are chosen, it will take, it'd be great to have very good participation in it. And then the participants will discuss how this would work, some of those things I talked about before, and find out about how it works in other cities and the best practices. What we have to provide if we get this is marketing of the workshop, invitations to the key stakeholders, the decision makers' commitment to attend the workshop, and local logistics and a self-assessment. And most of that, I assume, would come in our office and then maybe Brent Childers' office, but most of the work I would do. The outcomes for the workshop would be an understanding of the elements of the bike share programs, identification of potential barriers to bike sharing, and strategies to overcome them, and a understanding of the legal health and social equity issues, and a framework for addressing the feasibility of it. Special considerations, if your community is seeking to expand bicycling among economically disadvantaged populations, you are encouraged to apply. And we actually are doing that. We've been, the Greenways Commission has been working with WKU on a cycle tracks program where you track bike riding habits of people in different communities. And they're, through this Paul and I grant, they're trying to reach out to populations that cannot afford a car and to try and find out how to get them to use, because this cycle tracks program is an app that you use on your cellphone, but some people don't have a cellphone. So that grant is to try and reach out to some of those communities, which is one of the things they want to be done. There's a lot of benefits to a bike share program. You know, it's good for public health, it's cost-effective means of improving public transit. I've met with some of the city staff yesterday in Brent's office and talked to the international coordinator, and she's had a lot of people who move here through the refugee center don't have cars and have trouble getting a driver's license. So that would help them and some, if they live like at the apartments on Lover's Lane, fill the gap between the bus stop and their home. You know, you could just jump on this bike. It's affordable, enjoyable recreation, good for the environment, you know, down the road if this kind of thing's become successful theoretically, it'd reduce pollution. And then of course, for WKU, it'd be great if a lot of students would start, you know, riding so that it'd alleviate the parking problems. And it creates different businesses downtown. I covered that, and good for families and people who want to try riding a bike but don't want to buy one, this is a way to just try it out. In my research in the last few days while I was pulling this together, I was researching the different types of bike shares and found out that there's two main ones. And one of them is like, this photo on the left I took in Nashville, Nashville, Chattanooga, quite a few cities already have a bike share program where they have these stations that the bikes are at, and you go up there and put your credit card or ATM card in and rent the bike and you can take it, okay, out. Then the other one, which is a lot cheaper, is one that just goes into, you put the bike anywhere, you just have to have a rack. You don't have to get, this first system is very expensive. So, but this other system, which is called Social Bicycles, is very affordable, and a lot of cities have started using that. So I would imagine if we did this, we could look into something like that. So that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Miranda, who's going to own the bikes?
Well, that would have to be determined in the workshop. It could be the city, or in some places, it's a corporation will sponsor it. There's different things, or some, you know, maybe an entity like Western or the city could. But if it was the city, of course, that, there would be a cost to it. And so, so the idea of the workshop is to kind of consider the idea and see if it's feasible and see what the benefits are. So, and then look at potential owners. But that, that would be worked out in that workshop, so.
I'm thinking the New York program, I know in New York, there's a bank that sponsors.
Right, yes, yeah, sometimes there's a price. And then in Indian.
It's always a bank.
Yeah, in Indian Heights, it's.
Brad Hops here.
Yeah.
It's where the money is.
Trex Bicycles sponsors some of them in some programs in some cities.
Do they have some type of GPS system set up?
Yeah, yeah. It's pretty neat. It basically works that less expensive one that I was talking about. You just look it up on your phone, you've become a member, and then it costs the individual about, I think it was something like $10 to join, or $30 to join, and then you can ride for free if you keep it to short rides. So the idea is you'd take it to go to the Greenways, or you'd take it to go to lunch or something like that. But it is all on your phone. If you don't have a phone, though, on this second system, there's a little thing on the bike, so you don't actually have to have a phone.
Joe's police background and taking theft reports of bicycles come into play there, didn't it, Joe? I do have a comment. We have a tremendous problem with the lack of adequate transportation. And sometimes we think of transportation obviously as being a car, which a lot of people can't afford to operate a car, much less own one.
Right.
And then we think about it being buses and taxis and things like that. But this is a, I'll be interested in seeing how this plays out because this may be another answer to certain people with a transportation problem.
Right, yeah.
And I've mentioned this before, but I've been working on a project with United Way of Southern Kentucky in the Tin County area. And in every county and every city, transportation is the issue. It's for healthcare, for jobs, for just about anything. And so I'm excited about seeing this program come here. I know as a commission, we've allotted in this current budget another $80,000 to help in some routes. Hopefully, that's what's going to happen. But again, transportation is, the lack of adequate transportation is a tremendous problem that I don't think a lot of people understand. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Just so our citizens understand, though, we are just voting tonight to approve for you to apply, and hopefully we'll get accepted for a study to be done and to talk about bike share.
There's no money involved, and it's really just requesting support and attendance should we get it.
Okay, I don't want our citizens to get all excited thinking we're bringing this right now.
No, no money involved.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Ordinance, first reading of ordinance BG 2014-35.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 3.33 acres of property located at 1150 Morgantown Road, presently owned by James and Gail Manning and Paul and Winona Manning, and 3.75 acres of Morgantown Road right of way, for a total of 7.08 acres, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. Fivell.
Thank you, Mayor. When it makes sense for both the request and for the city, we are always interested in looking at increasing our city side through consensual annexation. Tonight, we have had such a request by James and Gail Manning and Paul and Winona Manning. Jean has been involved in annexation from a legal point of view and is most versed in the law. Jean, can you take this, please?
I will. Like I said, we were contacted by Representative Mannings initially, asking about consensual annexation. We sent them the forms, they signed them, sent them back to us. We started working on it and want to make sure everybody is aware where this one is. This is on Morgantown Road across, basically across from where Walmart is. That north side of Morgantown Road, none of that right now is in the city until you get basically to where Lampkin Park is. So this will be the first property past Lampkin Park to request to come into the city. To do that, we had to annex that portion of Morgantown Road in front of it to make that connection because we had to be contiguous. That led to next question, though, because the rest of Morgantown Road, even though the south part of Morgantown Road's in the city, north part is not, that part of Morgantown Road itself was also not in the city to basically where Lampkin Park is. So in addition to bringing in the Manning property, we decided to bring in Morgantown Road from Lampkin Park up to the front of this property as well, because it's kind of difficult to be in-city, out-of-city, in-city, out-of-cities. So we thought just to make that connection, we'd bring in all Morgantown Road from Lampkin Park up to the, I guess, what, westernmost part of this property as well. At some point, we may come back in with another annexation of some more Morgantown Road because we've got some issues of Veterans Boulevard at the, I'll be on the left as well, too, but we'll worry about those later. But right now, this is a consensual annexation. The Mannings have requested to come in. We just need to bring in a little bit of Morgantown Road to go along with it.
Discussion? Not taking anybody's property without, not annexing anybody's property without their request?
Nope, they have asked to come into the city.
Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-225.
Municipal order, accepting donations and pledge of support from Independence Bank for the construction, maintenance, and use of the City of Bowling Green West End Park. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Fivell.
As the commissioner will be reminded, we're in the process of building a new park on West Main Street on the west end of our community. Our good friends at Independence Bank have come forward on their own accord and are asking you to accept $11,000 cash donation from the bank, as well as pledge for an additional $4,000 to help us create a park in this area. We used to have a park here, but due to how the former lease was written, a private company was able to take back the property and we had to build a new playground. And so we're here tonight to ask your permission to accept Independence Bank's money. I think Brad Howard, Brad Howard is here and may want to make a few comments if you would like.
I think Mr. Howard would. He was shaking his head all the wrong way, I'm sorry. Brad Howard is the local president for Independence Bank, and he's accompanied by his two bosses, I mean, able employees, Susan Higgins and Joetta Arnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Independence Bank, as you know, our mission is to better our communities, and one of the things that we do try to emphasize is the assistance of improving our communities where we live, work, and in this case, hopefully, play. Been very fortunate to work with these two ladies right here who are extremely persistent in getting together with Mr. Belcher and coming up with a wonderful idea as to what we can do to help some children down the west end of town. And hearing about the soccer field, what's going on, I think this would just complement what the city's efforts are doing in that area and trying to improve those lives. So we've already had some clients that work with us, some of our customers that are thinking of how they can pitch in as well to make this truly a community effort in trying to improve that area. So, you know, if there's anything else we can do, we'd sure appreciate it.
It's my favorite Independence branch right next door to me over there.
Bruce, the comment, when I was going over the list of things, when we were talking about the soccer field, I let this one out because it didn't want to steal anybody's thunder. But this, again, is a sign of a terrific partnership, and I know this is easy to talk about because it's a nice donation and a nice gesture, and it's going to mean a lot to, again, our citizens, to have that facility down there. Thank you all for doing this.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you again very much. First reading of ordinance BG 2014-36.
Ordinance relating to cable television franchise and ordinance of the City of Bowling Green section of the Bowling Green Warren County Cable Franchise Authority approving an extension of non-exclusive cable franchise agreement with Insight Kentucky Partners Two, LP. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams.
There's a lot of big doings going on across America with cable television and the rearrangement of various franchise and ownership agreements. We're facing a similar issue. I would ask, given the complexity of these issues, I would ask Jean to address this particular ordinance for you. Jean?
It seems like we've been talking cable every meeting. Every time, we have something come up, and just as history, make sure everybody's aware, during the last couple of months, we have done two transfers of control from Insight slash TKR, since TKR now, not TKR, but Time Warner now owns Insight. We approved a transfer of control from Time Warner to Comcast, and also now from Comcast to Charter. Both of those, though, as we said, were contingent upon federal approval by the FCC. That approval has not yet come in yet. Everybody expects it to be probably next spring, sometime before that happens. But in the meantime, we are coming to the end of our 20-year franchise. We entered into a 10-year franchise in 1996. We extended it for five years. I think we extended it for 13 months. We extended it for 23 months, and now we're basically back to our last two years. This one expires December 31 of this year, so we only have two more years that we can go. By Kentucky Constitution, we can't have a franchise go beyond 20 years. So two years right now is the most we can do. So we're here tonight to request that the existing franchise agreement, and right now it would have to be with Time Warner, since the other ones have not yet gone through officially, that that franchise agreement be continued for two years under the same terms and conditions as we've got right now. You will note one thing that I did put in, I'm sure a lot of people caught the news story, but the Kentucky Court of Appeals a week or so ago ruled that a state statute in about 2005, 2006, that basically took away the city's ability to impose, or not to impose, but to have franchise fees was unconstitutional. That case is far from being over. Our franchise may be over before that case is resolved, who knows? But I did put in language that if that case is upheld, and we do have the ability to have a franchise fee, that we will go back to the 3% franchise fee we had in 1996. So I did put that language in. Everything else is going to remain the same. I anticipate that probably within the next six to nine months, we will begin negotiations again for a longer term, hopefully more than two years, franchise agreement with, hopefully, I guess it'll be Charter at that point. And then, you know, at that time, we'll bring in maybe community involvement, involvement from commissions as well to figure out what all we think we're going to need, either for another five-year commitment or 10-year or whatever. But we'll start that again before long. Again, right now, this will just continue our existing franchise agreement for two more years. I think we could not make any determination that Time Warner was not substantially in compliance with our existing franchise agreement. And I don't think anybody can contest that Time Warner, Charter, or Comcast are not technically able to run a franchise here in Bowling Green, Warren County, or that they don't have money to do so. And those are basically three things we have to look at to deny a franchise extension. And I don't think, there've been some places here in Kentucky that have had expired, but I don't think we want to go that route. I don't think that's really a thing we want to do. But again, we're here just right tonight to extend it for two more years. The idea, in the next few months, we will start negotiations for a longer term.
And I might point out that those news stories that are affecting some of the other franchises in other cities, they were operating on expired franchises. Ours has not expired. And another thing to point out about all of our cable television franchises is that they are non-exclusive. So this is not, this is not ever saying that someone else couldn't come in and make a bid proposal if they were, they were willing to meet the standards that are set forth in our franchise agreement.
In fact, when we do the next one, we will actually have to go out and the newspaper advertisement and solicit proposals as part of the franchise requirements we're going to have to do.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-226.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to submit a request to the governor of the Commonwealth of Kentucky to designate the City of Bowling Green, together with the counties of Warren, Allen, Simpson, and Logan, a workforce area pursuant to Section 106 of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act effective as of July 1, 2015, authorizing, approving, and directing the incorporation of a nonprofit, non-stop Kentucky public corporation as defined in Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, authorizing the mayor to notify the chairperson of the Barren River Workforce Investment Board that the city does not desire to continue as a party to the current workforce area as designated under the Workforce Investment Act effective as of June 30, 2015, and stating the city's intent to enter into an agreement with the counties of Warren, Allen, Simpson, and Logan. So moved. Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. This is my sponsorship, and I would like to ask Chief Operating Officer Meredith Robinson from Golden Bowling Green Area Chamber of Commerce to help us understand exactly where we're going.
No problem. First off, Katie Brandenburg and I have been on the traveling team. We've gone to all the counties, all the fiscal courts. By the way, they did put us first, just so you know.
Was Simpson County unanimous, too?
Excuse me?
Was Simpson County unanimous, too?
Yes, yes, they were. What you have before you is the collective thought process as far as moving forward with the workforce effort for our area. Collectively, these four counties and the City of Bowling Green represent the market for South Central Kentucky. You make up 60% of the population, 70% of all of the businesses in the Tin County area, and 74% of all of the jobs. So sort of as these four counties go, the rest of the counties go as well. And currently, we do have an issue with our workforce effort. As Mr. Curley has been quoted in the paper, we do have decreasing funds available from the federal sources to fund this, but unfortunately, locally, our allocations for overhead have not decreased likewise. So we are spending more and more on overhead versus what we're spending on programming. We've actually seen a 74% decrease in programming costs over the last five years, and we've seen a market increase in overhead during that same period of time. Starting July 1st of 2015, the federal law is actually changing. We law went into effect in 1998. It has not been updated since that time. They are doing so in 2015 with what's called WIOA, the Workforce Investment Opportunities Act. What this does is allows for a transformational change within the system. They're pushing for communities to come up with new, creative, and innovative ways to put people to work. We've been very blessed here to have huge economic development success with those companies, the existing companies expanding, and the new companies locating here. That creates a workforce issue. Everybody wants to know, do we have the workforce trained and available and the skilled labor necessary to meet their current needs and to meet their future needs? And how are we, as a community, coming together to make sure that that is a sustainable program? Beginning of this year, the commission came together with the Fiscal Court of Warren County to put together a workforce coordinator program, a position funded at the chamber to help the companies that are targeted sectors that get incentives from the state to find jobs, because they are having a hard time locally here filling those positions. And we want to make sure that we can give a yes answer to all the new companies that are looking for us. During that timeframe, as of right now, with the 23 companies, mostly manufacturing, distribution that we're working with, there are over 405 jobs open that we need to fill, and we've got more coming, because we've got more announcements coming. So this is an opportunity for, like I said, the market to come together, to really put together a cohesive effort that's really going to look at identifying gaps, again, finding gaps in our labor market, putting together training programs with our training providers, and placing our citizens to work. Earlier today, we had a ribbon cutting for the Speculative Building, and the mayor's comment was very appropriate. The best gift that we can give anybody is a job, and that's what we're here to do. And we need your help to do that. And so this resolution is sort of four things. One, it's a letter to the governor on behalf of the four counties in the City of Bowling Green, asking that under the new law, we be designated as a new workforce area, leaving the door open to the other counties if they want to come onboard. Two, it creates a 501(c)(3) corporation, which is a private foundation in order to be the fiscal agent of the WIOA funds that would be designated for our area, our per capita ratio. And the reason why it's a 501(c)(3) is because in other areas of the country where the workforce effort is a very high-functioning effort, the WIOA dollars, the federal money, is 15%, 20% of their overall budget. They have a board, in addition to the WIOB board that's mandated by federal law, their 501(c)(3) has a high-powered fundraising board of your community leaders that are looking for other private foundation, educational grants, public foundation, educational grants. So they really maximize those federal dollars as matching funds instead of 100% of the effort that is currently what we're looking at. And then it leaves room to the, based on this new arrangement, obviously, all the parties have to come together and agree on a new inter-local agreement of how this would be operated and how it would work. And so that lays out those discussions. Obviously, that agreement, once formulated, would come back before each of the bodies for you guys to vote on.
Mr. Denning.
Yes, sir.
Is the question, I guess, two things. Do we not have the numbers available to fit the need, or is it that we don't have the necessary skills and training background to fit the needs?
We have a training gap. We have, there are, there are a sufficient number of people that are unemployed and underemployed in our area. It's identifying those people, it's getting them into an appropriate training program. That's what these federal funds are supposed to be used for, is to get them the skills necessary to be employable. So we have the people available, we have the job openings, we need to match them with those skill sets. We need a very proactive approach to doing that.
As a follow-up to that, you said there are 405 jobs currently. What type of skills are needed for those?
It runs the gamut. Most of them are entry-level production technicians. So, one of the, an industry certification is a CPT, Certified Protection Technician. It's a relatively short certification course. It's relatively inexpensive. So getting people, identifying a pipeline of people in order to be able to go through that program, get their certification, and walk through the door of a Sun Products, or Bowling Green Metal Forming, or Cannon Automotive, or, you know, any of these production places. Constellium UACJ is getting ready. Their facility is going up in the trans park. They're going to need to hire 80 people to fill it. Billstein's going to be right behind them next year. They're going to need people to fill that building.
Are the employers making their needs known specifically?
Yes.
What, what type of person are looking for?
Yes. Because of the position that was created, we have gone directly to the companies, asked them, we have job descriptions on every position that's available, and we have the pay information. Now, I will caveat that by saying we are not a placement service in the fact that we're not sort of licensed to be a staffing company, but we take that information and we work with the public sector entities that are tasked with this job, and also the private sector entities. Goodwill Job Junction is a great example of that. They have been fabulous to work with as far as helping to identify candidates, get them the NRC testing, which a lot of the manufacturers require as well, which is just like a three-hour test, and get them ready for interviews and interviewing placement. And through them, we've actually placed 89 people.
What about Kentucky's rear center?
It's been difficult, honestly, to get information as far as referrals that there may, we provide weekly. All the agencies that we're dealing with, they get a weekly email from us, updated with by company what positions are outstanding. What we ask from them weekly is for them to provide us how many referrals they've made for each position to each company, and they have not provided us any numbers.
Why is that? Politics?
I think a lot of it is, yes.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
You know, does Frankfurt know the problem that we are having? In other words, they're helping us to bring the jobs in, and they have an agency that's been there for years, called different names over the years.
We have had conversations with Commissioner Brinley. She's been here directly, met with the judges and mayors, as well as Director Collins. Buddy Hoskins with OET, which is Vicki's supervisor, has been here. They are aware that we have an issue, but so far, a concerted effort towards a solution has not been put forward.
And this problem is not unique to Bowling Green. This is a national problem. It's just that we have found that there are unique and interesting solutions to the problem that are not being taken here locally that we think we can, we can approach. I'm sorry, Mr. Waltrip, do you have a question?
I was going to say, Bruce has done a good job at keeping us posted on these things, I think. She's been one of the leaders, along with Mike and Ron, and I know it's hard to break away when we talk about South Central Kentucky. However, it seems like, you know, if something's not working, we need to try something else. So, I hope that this works. Kudos to the people that have at least tried to come up with a solution to a problem. So, again, I hope that it, I hope it works.
Does anyone else have a comment or question?
I do want to respond to, I don't generally, but I do want to respond in this case to comments in the paper about having a separate workforce area will mean doubling the expenses for administration and salaries, and which is less money provided to services. You have some information with regard to underspending?
Yeah, and actually, this, what I have here is the June 2016, June 16, 2014 newsletter straight from the Brad that they provided. In 2010, the amount of money spent on program services was $4,941,650. In 2013, it was $1,353,0169. And that timeframe, the salary fringe of their overhead went from $716,000 to over $755,000. Numbers for 2014 are up around $900,000 for that overhead now.
So, that overhead went from 12% to 32% of the funding.
Of their overall budget, yes.
And they still had some underspending that went where?
They have a significant amount of underspending. We had over a million dollars last year that as of June 30th had not been spent of that year's allocation. Technically, they said it was encumbered. So this year, realistically, this fiscal year, they have last year's underspent allocation and this year's allocation. So there's 3.4 million currently available to be spent to help fix this problem. But so far, we haven't seen any efforts towards doing that.
And I don't want people to think that we're just unhappy with an individual who'd been working for the last two and a half years to try to make some improvements to the current system and have not been able to convince those that are holding the pocketbook to make any changes. So, like you said, we're here to take care of the people in Bowling Green-Warran County, and we're pleased that Allen, Simpson, and Logan have chosen to go with us, and we expect more counties to join us in the future. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Walperson.
Yes. Okay, we did number 21, so that's the last item on the agenda. We'll take about a five-minute recess and return for closed session. I'm sorry.
She had a few slides of recent progress at the ITA, and we can have her come back another time.
No, this would be good if you wanted to do just that briefing on the trans park. That would be great. I'm sorry if that's all right with the commission?
They say a future is waiting for you.
Okay.
Just to give you an update on some items that are of interest in the technology part. First of all, this is the current Speculative Building that we had the ribbon cutting for today. It is finished, 108,000 square feet on prime property on Cosma Drive right across from Bowling Green Metal Forming. We have multiple companies interested in this spec building. As Judge said this morning, we expect to have it filled very, very soon, so.
And the owners of that, well, you have someone, you said, that's looking at it?
Yes, sir.
And those individuals are saying, we need X number of employees in order to meet our demands and our production needs. And this, what we're doing here tonight says, we are not sure, and I'm broadening it. We're not sure we have right now the individuals.
What we've said, honestly, with the vote that you guys just took, is that we are a proactive community, and we're going to do whatever is necessary to get you what you need. So, and that's the message that we've been sending to you.
And then, I-65. For those that didn't think it was ever going to happen, these are the bridge, initial bridge pilings that are going up on the north side of 6880, on the ITA property. Just on the other side here is where the Billstein project will be built. So it is coming out of the ground and going well.
14 lawsuits to stop the project. We won 14 in a row.
I'm glad I missed that part. Technology Way, the ITA recently had a grant from TBA, so we shrunk the median and widened it back out to four lanes. That's outflow that you see over on the left-hand side. We also extended the road down to the edge of the EDA-owned property. This road extension will actually be on your next agenda. So please do that. And then, part of that grant as well, we went ahead and graded. This is 108,000 square foot pad on Technology Way. That'll be the home of our next Speculative Building, which we had clearance from the EDA board meeting this morning to go ahead and start that bid process. And this is a 60,350 square foot pad that's already graded and ready to go right next to Gre, also on Technology Way. And then the last, but not least, very exciting, Constellium. For those of you who have been watching that project, this is an aerial view of how far they've come. If you'll remember, we had their groundbreaking on July 2nd. And so they already have steel coming out of the ground. They've already poured all their foundations. This is a ground view of their structure that, that was taken today. Lots of exciting things going on at the trans park, and we really appreciate all of your support to make it happen.
And what's exciting about that project is this is the base metal from which most manufacturers then place. So this is, this is exciting here.
Yeah, everybody this morning, they're like, why is there still white? And I was like, it's body and white aluminum plate. It's got to be white.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll be the end of our regular session. We'll be going into closed session.
Bruce, just one other thing, if you don't mind. Wish the community, citizens, a happy Thanksgiving, and remember those that are less fortunate that might need some help all year, but particularly during this time of year.
Right, thank you very much.